Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order regular city council meeting for Monday, November 17th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. First order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members who've given their lives for our country. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, if you take roll call, please.
Mayor Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dole.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Dole.
Here.
Councilmember Karafotis.
Show Councilmember Karafotis absent and excused.
You have a quorum of six.
Thank you. Item four is the approval of the agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended council meeting agenda for Monday, November 17th.
Support for Mayor Protem Dole. Discussion from the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion passes 6-0. Okay, we don't have any recognitions, no state or county officials. We do have a presentation tonight. I'll ask Mr. Matt Miller and John, Mr. John Prosh from the DDA. Actually, from the Community Development Authority, but representing DDA tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. And we've got an informational meeting to present to you tonight. And part of this is an informal, informational meeting that we're required to do, actually two meetings that we're required to do and send notification to the taxing authorities that we get part of our funding from. So even though it is required, I still think it's a good time for us to kind of recall everything that's occurred in the DDA and how we've spent all of the funds that were allocated for DDA services. So I did do a presentation for you, a short one, that we will, we'll kind of just glide right through, okay? So and if you have any questions, of course, feel free to ask during the, during the presentation or at the end, okay? Thank you. So first of all, the DDA has a board of trustees. That includes the mayor, of course. And then it's comprised of business owners, property owners, residents in the district, and then also members and residents at large. The board of trustees has a chairperson, a vice chair, treasurer, and a secretary. And also, I provide the services to the DDA as the DDA director. So and then we have, this is kind of the, just a little diagram of how everything works. The DDA Board of Trustees, the DDA Executive Board, the Community Development Director, and then John Prosh is the Assistant Director. And it's kind of how our big staff works over at the DDA and for the city. So I did want to also thank all of our board of trustees. They're listed there. They give their time to volunteer for the DDA and to make sure that all the funds are spent according to the plan and that we meet and we get ideas from all of these members in the district and to kind of implement the entire project that we go every year. And I just wanted to thank all of them for their time serving on the DDA. The DDA is funded. It comes from a tax increment financing, which is a TIF. And that's actually a mechanism that redistributes current tax dollars collected in the city. The TIF process is basically, it takes property tax revenue established from the year of inception, and then we build on that from that year. And so this taxable value here kind of shows you, the DDA was created in 1983, and the baseline for taxable value was 12,000, 12,521,993 dollars. And then that was kind of the starting point. And then since that time, then we are allowed to capture that increase that has occurred in the value of the property since that time. So, so you can see, just the current taxable value is 34 million, minus that 12, which is still the original cap stays in place, and then our captured taxable value is 21 million dollars. Of that, you times that by our city mills, 29, 29 mills, and that comes up generally with our budget of 629,000 dollars for the year. A good portion of that, of course, comes from the DDA, the city taxes. And then the other portion comes from what we call other funding sources, which are taxing authorities. Those are, of course, I'll show you the kind of, you'll see that Wayne County School Craft Community College, the jail, Wayne County Transit, the Wayne County Parks, and the Huron Clinton Metro Authority. They all, they are, they get a portion of the tax actually is kept in the city, and we use that in the DDA. So that's the purpose, actually, of this informational meeting, is that they were all sent notice that we're having the meeting and how the funds are being used. So and this is a pie chart that just shows you kind of the distribution of how the funds are and where all of the funding comes from in the DDA. And you can see, of course, the large part is kind of that original city inception and the growth in the value. And then the rest is the, kind of the split out of all of our taxing authorities, that the money is kept here, not sent to those taxing authorities. Of course, we use all those funds for business attraction in the district, community events, economic vitality, first impressions, and building awareness to our downtown in Garden City. The boundaries are established, and all the funds that are spent have to be spent within that district there. And of course, you see, it's on Middle Belt from Bach to Maplewood and Ford Road, Harrison to Henry Ruff. And that's all the businesses that front on those roads. Kind of our position in the city, I put that in here so that we operate as a separate entity within the city. The budget is approved by the city council annually. We work together to provide the services of the director. And of course, we're always working to make sure that the downtown looks good. So it is a lot of maintenance occurs down there, and I, I just don't want to like negate that because it, it looks good and, and we maintain it quite well. I do want to give Kim a lot of, or Councilmember Dole, a lot of accolades for all the years that she did in maintaining it too. So some communities had these DDA dollars that were spent downtown, and then they didn't maintain them. And I think what's important for Garden City to realize is we maintained them the whole time. And so they didn't fall into disrepair. And I'm continuing that program, and we're always looking to do improvements and make it look better downtown. We also aid businesses. We started a business incentive program this year. I'll talk a little bit about that later. And then I also work to facilitate new businesses coming into town, and we kind of guide them through the process. These are kind of our services and projects, parking lots, the brick wall repairs, streetscape maintenance and decorations during the holidays. Today, the Christmas tree went up. I don't know if you noticed that at the Commons Corners, it went up. We did the Hometown Heroes Banner Program for two years, and it was approved for 2026. The Business Incentive Program. We also do the Craft and Vendor Show, the Lucky Squirrel, Chili Cookoff, Garden City Commons with the flowers, and the Garden Club. They, they plant them every year. They do a wonderful job, a good partnership there. And then also the Sandland Parade and Music in the Park are sponsors for those events to occur in the city. And also, we pay a portion of the flock cameras in downtown too, so that we can make sure it's a safer downtown. And of course, we welcome businesses and work to coordinate all of the ribbon cuttings in downtown. I did want to talk a little bit about our future plans too. So this year, we're going to be working on the Folk Art Tiff Agreement. You know that. I also want to start to develop a Restaurant Week. So been talking to a lot of restaurant owners in the downtown to see if we can put together a Restaurant Week to get more people in the doors and to help the businesses. We're going to work on a marketing campaign for 2026. Of course, we're again, the Chili Cookoff, we've already started, kind of, we reviewed how this year's went. And then we want to see how next year's will be even better. And working on the Lucky Squirrel. Also going to be working on the Northeast Parking Lot, the Alleyway, kind of behind Garden City Cafe. We're going to be replacing that and some drainage work. Also work on Landscape Islands in what I call the Northwest, kind of the Kmart Parking Lot area. And then also work on our available property listing to see properties that are available. I started that, and then so many changes have happened, I didn't keep up with. I'm going to work on getting it back in better shape. And that, of course, correlates with the businesses downtown and the occupancy. I also, I did apply for a placemaking grant, so that hopefully, hopefully we'll get it. And it's really to create bollards that will go in the ground in our event space to make it safer for people that are there. So they kind of submerge, they pull up. And so I hope we get the grant. I did apply for that. Also, Safe Streets, the grant, of course, we are getting that finalized, and then we'll be eligible to apply for more dollars as we go forward. And then also the completion of the Housing Readiness Grant, the Master Plan Update, which has implications, of course, downtown too. The Business Incentive Grant. So we changed it a little bit this year. The DDA did approve a change to our grant program. And it's really a facade, architectural assistance, and signage improvement. And there's kind of money allocated there. You see 7,000, 2,000, and 1,000. And it's to, of course, make changes to the buildings that are in place in downtown and to really give those direct dollars to an improvement that we will see, windows, doors, facade improvements. The sign is $1,000 to bring kind of non-compliant signs into compliance. And to, of course, help anybody, a new business, get a sign that really looks better than maybe just a regular sign. And so we've done that. And then the architectural assistance is to help, help a business that, you know, might need floor plans to get permits, things like that, so that we'll be able to help them get into the door and assist in establishing their business downtown. So the Chili Cookoff, this is kind of a neat, I don't know how to do that. We have to hit the start button. Oh, he left. We had a drone shot. Let's see if it'll work. There it is. So this is the Chili Cookoff, and it's just a 10-second video. But we worked with the police department, and they set the drone up during that, during our event. And I just kind of thought it was kind of neat to see, you know, we didn't even know they were there. But they were out there just looking, and they were able to survey kind of the edges of the, the whole perimeter of the site and to see people down there. And I thought it was kind of a neat thing to kind of include, you know. I'm not that technological, technologically savvy, but I did ask Zach to put this video clip in there, and I'm appreciative of that. So here's some pictures of our 2026 Chili Cookoff. And just again, showing the community coming together and having a good time on that day. This is a Lucky Squirrel, one of the Lucky Squirrels, and it's showing the vendors. And one of our vendors comes, he sells plants, the guy on the left, and he also sings. So and he's got a guitar. I think it just adds a nice ambiance to shopping downtown. Also, this year, we had 20 new businesses open in the downtown. And so I put them all up here for us all to see and really to, you know, I put them out there so that we see them, but also that people will go there and shop at all of these places. These are new stores, restaurants, cafes. We've got some offices that have come into downtown. But again, I just did a review of the last year, and 20 businesses opened in this year. And so this, this is just kind of the part of the presentation. But we went out and took pictures of, you know, some of the new businesses that have come into downtown. Cement House is on Ford Road, but they used to be on Warren, and they moved uptown. So that. Ever Fresh Market is going to open any day in Rite Aid, the former Rite Aid. And of course, I have lots of communication with him. Some good, not some bad, of course. But we've got him in place, and he's happy to be here, and we're glad he's there. Beauty School. This is up where kind of just next to Garden City Cafe. All of these businesses are open. And actually, Cafe Europe is going to be right in kind of the epicenter for the parade. And he's going to be offering warm drinks and things like that to people that are there for the parade. He asked how he could help, how he could be part of it. And so look forward to that on Sandland Parade Day. Sharon's Heating and Cooling is opening up kind of two places. They bought one building behind that, this at 5905 Middle Belt. And then their offices are going to be up in the front. And they're going to have a conference room and a little training center there too for the staff that's in place. Also, they took advantage of our facade grant, and those are all new windows in the building there. Do you see that? So that's kind of a neat thing, made the building look better. They're going to work on the shake siding and put up newer shake. I guess some of it's failing, and he's going to work on doing that too. Opera Pastry and Cafe, that's at Planet Fitness, kind of in the La Critz Weber property there. Go, go visit them. They have wonderful, really wonderful baked goods.
They're so good.
They are very good. Yes, thank you. Very good. Driving School is in that strip mall. True Temp Heating and Cooling, it's an office for another heating and cooling company, and they also have a training center in there too. It's a call center training for that, for their business there. This is Fawa's Realty, which is up in the Hershey Shoes Building. Paramount Tax is across the street from City Hall and the old Bank of America. Then this is, I kind of did a progression of kind of Sharon's Heating and Cooling, how it looked, how it looks now, and how it kind of looks in the future. Oh, I'm sorry. Family Heating and Cooling, thank you. I Sharon's Heating and Cooling on my mind. I apologize. But they did take advantage of our architecture grant also from the DDA, and they produced the plans, and then they are coming to fruition. So I always love to see that coming into fruition in kind of a relatively short amount of time also. But you can kind of see the old and then kind of see the new. I thought that was kind of a neat. Of course, we do the flowers in downtown every year, and this year, I think they looked really good. I don't know if the heat helped them, or I don't know, but they looked pretty good, I thought. This isn't a big deal, but I wanted to show this too. It's the Northeast Parking Lot, kind of where the Lucky Squirrel is, and then also the alleyway behind Elite Eye Care. And so on the left there is the alleyway, and then on the right is the seal coat and re-striping of the entire parking lot. We also filled all the potholes. We did a joint crack ceiling, a big improvement to that parking lot. And then the alleyway was, you know, almost not passable. It was like gravel practically. So that was bid out, and OCG, who's our sidewalk contractor, actually, they were a little bit on that, and they were able to really knock that out in, it was like a week. So it was a minimal disturbance to any of the businesses, and they all love all of the new concrete. Doesn't sound real, real fun, but again, it's making improvements and maintaining what we have. And so I think that's important to do that. Also, this year, the mayor had asked us to do some research to identify kind of 30-year businesses, businesses that have been here for 30 years. So I talked about how we want to get new businesses, but we also, we should honor and thank those businesses that have been here a long time. And so we did certificates, and we went on a tour this summer to kind of distribute certificates and thank them for being in the community for more than 30 years. And so this is just kind of a photo montage of our, our tour of the city. But you see a lot of businesses there. The top right is Kroll, Bolden Floris, Oakwood Health, which is really, you know, now Horwell. Patel Brothers is there, Hungry Howies, Ace Hardware, Elite Eye Care, McFarlane, Villa Bakery. So all of them, it was really nice to see them. Hudson Cleaners too, has been here more than 30 years. Family Heating and Cooling and.
Play-Dohs.
So it was really great. So to go out and, it's good to meet everyone and just establish those connections. So it was great. Then, of course, we did a lot of ribbon cuttings. This is Fawa's Realty. They also have a title company there also. That was a great, it was a wonderful hot day there, and out to cut the ribbons there. Eureka Eatery, which is part of the gas station, Henry Ruff. Then Off the Tea Golf, golf simulator on Ford Road. And then just most recently was our Brazilian Steakhouse on Ford Road also. I think it was a great day in there. Mr. Berry's really excited to be here in downtown Garden City. In the next year or so, where I just, I put out a couple of plans, of course, Folk Art Commons. And then also Hollywood Sound is going to be taken down. It's going to be a new building. This is going to be kind of the Ford Road frontage, and then they're going to have another building on the back. And that's been approved. Actually, if you go down there now, you'll see that they're digging and doing work right now on that. Also, this is our Hometown Hero banners. And actually, I kind of spotlighted, Brad's not here, but he might see it. And this is Brad, and that's his father-in-law. So we put them together on the same pole. I thought it was neat. And that was right, right by the commons there. And you see the flowers planted in the commons. This year also, just a couple of weeks ago, we had a power washer, and they kind of cleaned the entire commons and kind of got the leachate off of that flower planter there. And I think that's all. So I, I want to thank you. And if you have any questions, of course, you can email us, or of course, you can call me at City Hall, 734-793-1640. And John and I are happy to answer any questions if you have any questions.
Mayor. First off, thank, thank you guys for all you're doing over there. I know it's a lot of work and a great presentation. Mayor Protem Dole.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what the mayor said. You guys are doing a fantastic job downtown, and it is really noticeable. These businesses are coming in and doing a beautiful job behind their buildings and stuff. You and your board are doing a great job. On your Business Week thing, I got a little food for the.
A Restaurant Week?
Yeah, Restaurant Week, yeah. A little food for thought. We used to have a.
Diamond Dash.
Yeah, Diamond Dash. You know, they had a couple of school buses that took us around the six or eight businesses. That was a lot of fun. You might want to consider that. And we'd go in and socialize. They had finger food and stuff. What a great time for the community to get together and see these businesses.
Okay, good.
Also, I know a few years back, maybe last year, there was some discussion on a, on a park up in the Lucky Squirrel area, something similar to Plymouth Park. Is that still in the works, or is?
We, we have not done any work on that because we just don't have the funding at this time. I am trying to build the DDA funding up so that we'll have some options to maybe leverage some of our dollars, maybe for a grant or something. So I'm looking at trying to do that too, so.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have.
You. Further comments?
Mayor.
Councilmember King.
Do you have an idea of how many, after we revamped the grant, how many businesses have taken?
We've done.
Up on the offer?
We've done three.
Three?
But you know, it's, it's getting out there, I think. And I, I think that as more people hear about it, and it can be existing businesses too. So.
Okay.
So I've been, I, you know, I directed, I went in specifically for some that, you know, need a little help. And I thought for sure I could get a couple more interested, but they weren't. So I tried.
The ones that did, you, you can notice it. So. Further comments? Okay. Thank you, guys. Great job.
Okay, thank you guys, great job, great presentation. Can't wait till tomorrow.
Okay. The mayor gets to hear it again tomorrow.
Okay. Item eight is we do have some community events. I'll bring up our interim Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Zach King.
Can you go back, Brian? Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have a few events coming up in Parks and Rec and around the city with the holidays coming up. The first is Family Night Out this Friday at the Red Cliff Center. This is a goal to kind of show the families everything that's happening at Red Cliff, so we open up all the rooms and have pizza. It's very inexpensive to come out and see all of the Red Cliff and what we have to offer. Next, I kind of just highlight some of the holiday events coming up, which if you go next, we're running a camp this year during the Thanksgiving break on the next slide. This is Camp GC, we're running two days around Thanksgiving while the kids are out of school. Next, we have the, this is a new event, the Ice Arena, the Stuffed Thanksgiving Skate on Friday, November 28th. And then the day after that, we have the Santa Land Parade in downtown Garden City on Saturday, November 29th at 10:00 a.m. The Monday after that, we have the Christmas Tree Lighting, DDA Downtown Christmas Tree Lighting at the corner of Ford and Middle Belt. And then the day after that, Monday, we start Letters to Santa here at City Hall, so kids can bring letters up for the first two weeks of December, put letters in the mailbox and Santa will mail them back a letter. After that, we have our Christmas Senior Thanksgiving Party on Friday, December 12th at noon. Tickets are on sale now for the next few weeks for that. The Thanksgiving Dinner is next week for the seniors, but the tickets are already closed and sold out for that event. After that, we have the Santa Ride that's been in the city for a few years now on Thursday, December 18th at 6:30 p.m. If you go to www.gardencitymi.org/santaride, you can see the route that Santa takes around the city that night. The day after that, or two days after that, we have Breakfast with Santa at the Red Cliff Center. This is an event that combines with our Elf Workshop this year. We're hoping to sell out on this event. We have King Pancake coming out to have unlimited all-you-can-eat pancakes. We'll have time to take photos with Santa and if you so choose, you can also go to that Elf's Workshop later that afternoon. Then we have Skate with Santa over at the Ice Rank on Saturday, December 21st at noon. And those are all of our holiday events coming up. There's probably a few more, but I figure that was enough, so. All on the calendar, they can find on the website. Yep, gardencitymi.org on the homepage, all these events are in the news items, everything's coming up throughout the next two months at Parks and Rec and around the city. Thanks.
Great, thank you. A lot of stuff, busy couple of months coming up. Awesome. Okay, we have no petitions or communications, no public hearings. Item 11 is our consent agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items A1 through 4 as presented.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Hughes. Discussion from table. From public. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes 6-0. Onto our action items, we have McKenna and Associates Fee Adjustment. Mr. Miller.
Good evening again. So tonight, I'm here to request a fee increase for McKenna and Associates, who is our planning consultant. We currently under, we operate under a professional service agreement with McKenna and we've actually been operating under that agreement for more than 25 years. And they provided us very good and professional services the entire time to the city. And since I became the Community Development Director, I've been reviewing all of the fees in the building department, which I kind of talked about during the fee schedule that was amended in May. And so we did approve those fees and the increase in May, the council did, they went into effect July 1st. And it did include an increase to almost every one of the planning fees that we have in the department. McKenna, their last increase that the city approved was in 2012. So at this time, we kind of thought we really needed to look at how to make it fair for McKenna to perform their services about, was it 12 years later, almost 12, 13 years? And of course, while I was a city clerk and even more now, I've had an excellent working relationship with Mario and any of his predecessors that were before. Some of the planning issues in the city are complex and so it does, we need to bounce ideas off of each other, interpret the ordinance together. And I've always enjoyed working with Mario and what's nice with Mario is that, of course, he has a whole team of other planners at McKenna that he can reach out to and ask. Also, you know, we're often not the only city that has the same issue, so we can look at other cities and look at other ordinances that we can use. And of course, that's a resource that they have and they provide to us and so I really appreciate that. And of course, since we've had such a good working relationship also with Mario, I've been able to work with other staff members at McKenna and we've been able to secure two grants with them. And so I was able to write the narratives, send it to a couple of people at McKenna to see if they were good. And then Mario and I actually wrote one together. We kind of sat in a room and worked it out and we were able to get the housing, housing grant from Mishta. And I appreciate that, of course, from Mario and also to McKenna because they, they were able to make sure that we're hitting the points in the narrative so that we were able to obtain the funding, so. But I would like to recommend an adjustment of the fees as attached, which is roughly about a 15% increase and a maximum of $75,000 annually, which in before it was $60,000. So I would like to make that request to the council. I'm here and Mario is here also from McKenna if you have any questions.
At this time, we'll make a motion as an order and then if they have questions.
Mayor.
Councilmember Hughes.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend amendment to the attachment with McKenna and Associates, Inc. to modify the personal fee
Professional?
I'm sorry.
Professional fee.
Professional fee schedule as attached, increasing the annual not to exceed the amount of 75,000.
Support from Councilmember Witt. Discussion from table. Any discussion? I will just say, I've been to Planning Commission meetings and other meetings and the work that Mr. Ortega and McKenna has done for us over the course of the years, doing surveys and getting, prepping some of our Parks and Rec plans and everything else. They've done a fabulous job and basically, I guess, this comes down to about a 1% raise for the last 12 years that they haven't gotten anything, so I think it's a good, good starting or a good plan. Further comments from table?
Yeah, Mayor.
Councilmember King.
Will we need to adjust our fees to accommodate this increase?
No, the July 1st fee schedule that was approved included all of those planning fee increases.
Okay.
So we didn't, we won't need to, actually, to make it equitable, you know, we, we collect fees, but we really can't, we can't really benefit from those. We have to be able to provide a service for the fee and so this really will make it equitable in the fee schedule also for McKenna, so.
All right, thanks.
Further comments?
Mayor.
Mayor Protem Dol.
Is McKenna contracted to us annually or semi-anually? What's the
We have a professional service agreement and it's an automatic renewal every year.
Do we put out bids for other corporations?
Pardon?
Do we put out bids for other corporations that might be able to handle the same work?
Well, we have not for a number of years. We've used a professional service agreement that we've done.
And their bid required a straight fund?
Their pricing, their pricing did? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Their price, they had a fee schedule attached to their, I don't know if it was a bid or not, I apologize, I don't know 25 years ago if we entered into it via a bid or a professional service agreement. That's what we have, we've operated on for the last number of years. And so we've taken that fee schedule that came with their original professional service agreement.
I'm having a hard time with this considering the city's financial status. That's all I got.
Thank you. If I could just add though, one, professional service agreements are, just like the city selects a specific attorney to do a specific type of job. The reason we do professional service agreements is that professional services, one, you do want to make sure they're competitive, of course, but two, those services are critical and important that a council gets this type of services they're looking for. So they're not bid out like a traditional, you know, please build a restroom, because a number of companies can come and build a similar. But with professional services, you want to make sure that those type of services are able to be delivered in a way that's unique for the city and that council's happy with. And as far as the cost being concerned, this isn't a budget increase. When we pass on, when we create our fee schedule, it's in light of the possibility that a fee increase would occur with our professional services, particularly in planning. So some of it is a pass-through. The city incurs planning expenses. We, part of our job is to maintain a building, Community Development Director, staff for that, but also part of that is to hire a planning, professional planning service. So when we upped our fees, we upped them with the mind of, one, we need to cover our costs, but two, we need to cover any potential increases that may come in the future, knowing that we've been operating off essentially 2006 Planning Commission rates. So when we, when we set the fees in motion, there's two parts. One, you put the fees in motion, but something happens when you increase fees. You could see a reduction in revenue because someone may not want to take a part in that because those fees increased. We are now over a full quarter of the year and since we've increased those fees, we've seen the proper revenues to know that our fees can take on an increase in our planning. So the timing of this isn't necessarily tied to a contract. It's tied to our ability to collect the fees, know that the amounts will be there so the city doesn't incur any greater expenditures than is prepared for within the fee schedule. So it's, you know, as city manager and someone who helped construct the last budget and will construct the next one, I'm very conscious that we need to be cost-effective. That said, when we increase fees, I have to make sure that those fees are commensurate with our actual costs. So we increase fees thinking, hey, Plant Moran's going to, since we're operating off 2006 fees, they're due for an increase, we're increasing our fees to take that into consideration. So really, it's just, some of it is a pass-through. Some of it is reimbursing us, because we do have costs, but some of it is reimbursing the anticipated increase that we're asking for today. So this was all thought through, this isn't just, they showed up and said, hey, give us more money. It was literally thought through and timed previously that they could make this request. It was, and I think, you know, maintaining 2006 prices is one reason you keep someone around, that one, they have institutional knowledge, but two, you develop a good, consistent relationship and a consistent pricing model that we currently have, so. Sorry to jump in, I just wanted to add a little bit.
No, it's okay.
Thank you for that explanation. Further comments from table? From the public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes 5-1.
Thank you.
Okay, item two is 26 City Council Schedule. You want to speak on that, Mr. Smith?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. In front of you is the proposed 2026 City Council Meeting Schedule. This is a result of sitting down, looking at the calendar for next year, making sure we don't have meetings that conflict with holidays, community events like the tree lighting or autos for autism. Selfishly, I didn't put any council meetings the day before an election, just because we use that to set up. The one note I wanted to make to you on this is with our budget schedule for next year, I was able to configure the schedule where it kind of moves things up a little bit and gets us at least an extra two weeks in late April. I checked last year, or this year, our last budget meeting wasn't until the very end of April, April 28th. So with the proposed schedule for next year, our last budget meeting would be April 13th, which actually gives us two council, regular council meetings before those deadlines where we have to start making budget motions and things like that. I can take any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Motion is in order.
Mayor.
Mayor Protem Dol.
I'm motion to approve the 2026 City Council Schedule and direct the city clerk to publish as required in the Public Act 267 of 1976.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Hughes. Comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Item three is our Wayne County CDBG Agreement. Mr. King.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is a Wayne County CDBG Agreement. We do apologize for last minute getting this on the agenda. We just got this from the county on Friday, so we thought it was a good time to get this in front of you, given the light agenda tonight. This was, we were very lucky to get this. When we completed the last CDBG Agreement with the county, that was for the first two set of bathrooms we worked with at Red Cliff, moving those over to ADA and improving those restrooms. They kind of, at the end of that, they kind of asked like, how did it go? How was the project? How was your contractors? And we shared that it went really well, the bathrooms are very exciting, are very nice and that the community was very thankful of them. And they, we kind of mentioned like, it'd be nice if we could finish the last two, let us know the next funding cycle. And they said, how about this upcoming year? So they were able to follow through on that agreement. They kind of asked us for a ballpark number. If you can see that, I attached that proposal. It was very brief and it was just kind of like, okay, here's something that we can do. Thankfully, the Wayne County Commissioners put this on their agenda and were able to get this. I do want to thank also David Knezek and Celine, his team and all the Wayne County Commissioners. I've kind of been working with them last few weeks to get this on their agenda and make sure it was coming through still. But this, this is for to finish the third set and fourth set of restrooms in the community center, improving them and moving them over to ADA. As of right now, the remaining bathrooms are not ADA, being the first thing is the doors are too skinny and can't even get a wheelchair into those rooms. So those improvements would include increasing the doors that get in, new flooring, adding the ADA stalls, upgrading the partitions, the fixtures, the ceilings and the lightings to full accessibility standards. And then the fourth set of bathrooms, we're working with, actually, the third set, we would even go a little bit further and move some of those restrooms to be kid restrooms because there's a lot of youth in that corner of the building. And that fourth restroom set, the same thing, we have youth in that corner of the building, so we'd do some ADA, but also some youth restrooms. And then there's like a kind of a last set of bathrooms that aren't almost used right now and those would go into two family-style ADA restrooms to this proposal. They awarded us $304,509.23 to accomplish this. We do believe that is possible. It is a very short timeline, we only have until June 30th to secure a contractor, put the plans in place, come back to council to award that bid, start the work and complete the work and submit for reimbursement by June 30. We do believe that is possible moving forward. So after this is approved today, and I kind of put in there some of the next steps, we'll be working on the exact plans, what we're going to do in each room, secure a contractor, come back to council before we start work. I believe that's everything I had to say. Any questions?
Thank you. Motion is in order and if they have questions.
Mayor.
Councilmember Dol.
I'd like to recommend that the City Council approve an agreement with Wayne County CDBG in the amount of $304,509... Say that wrong. $304,509.23 for the restroom renovation project at the Red Cliff Center.
Support. Support from everybody. Councilmember King. Comments from table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Dol.
Want to say, nice job getting our hands on some more money to finish this project. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Mayor.
Councilmember Hughes.
I'd like to thank our Commissioner, David Knezek, for coming up and possibly driving some of this, so I appreciate that.
I'd like to say thanks also. I like the part, no matching funds, so it's not costing the city anything to upgrade everything. City loves free money. Further comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Okay, we have no other business. At this time, public comment, three minutes for anything non-agenda? Anybody wishing to speak? Anybody wishing to speak? Okay, close public comment. City Managers Report.
Just a couple of things tonight, Mayor, thank you. First, I was contacted by the Garden City Library Director, Lenz. He just wanted to ask if I could point everyone's attention to their website. It's www.gardencitylib.org, G-A-R-D-E-N-C-I-T-Y-L-I-B.org. They've recently created a new building, frequently asked questions, so if anyone is seeking some information about the new building, their plans, what they're looking to do and even some conceptual drawings, it's very informative and something to look at.
And feel free to click on and find that out. But I just wanted to pass that message along for Director Lenz. Appreciate him reaching out. And next, just wanted to remind everyone that the Police Department is still having the Battle of Badges and the Fire Department, but you can go ahead and vote for the Police Department. In their food drive, where you can choose who to donate to in order to see who can get more food. Again, feel free to drop it in the Police Department's thing. It's at the Police Department. Maybe that's some influence. I don't know. Oh, and then just one more thing. Dear Born to Mine Child High School, I know there's a lot of families who attend to mine child in Garden City and who have students or young children that go there and some in high school. Their varsity football team won their regional championship on Saturday. I was there. It was very exciting, but their work isn't done. They've got a semifinal next week, and then if they win that, onto the state championship. So, just congratulations to them. The whole community is very proud of them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Dole.
Well, I would just like to invite more of our residents to these meetings. I mean, they have no hesitation getting on Facebook or whatever and pointing out their views. This is the place to get your attention. All's welcome, and we love to hear from you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, hearing all the activities that are going on with Parks and Rec and as well as our downtown area and all that Mr. Miller's doing to beautify, you know, our city, and I think that Garden City's got a lot to offer. And I think sometimes people forget what we have here in this gem of a city, and I just want to point that out.
Thank you. Councilmember Witt.
Well, since it's almost Santa Land Parade time, I will say volunteers are most likely needed. If Zach can shake his head yes or no. Santa Land Parade's website, go there, sign up for volunteers. We need everyone to help where we can. Helps make the event a much bigger success, safety for people on the streets and everything like that. So, volunteers are always much needed. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember King.
I just mentioned that there's another event happening, coming up here. Haven of Love is hosting their first annual Holiday Craft Show on November 29th from 11 to 5. It's a $1 entry per adult, which benefits the Haven of Love. And I've heard Santa Claus will be there from 12 to 1. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Dole.
I have a couple of things. First, I'd like, I would like to ask, though, why the, why the sign over at the PD for the Police Department's about this big and the one for the Fire Department's about this big?
Pure coincidence.
Oh, okay.
Pure coincidence.
Okay, I thought maybe. Couple of things. I got a text today from a friend of mine who told me that her and a friend of hers, who are not Garden City residents, have been coming over to Radcliffe and taking part in the yoga class, and how much they're loving it and enjoy it and the whole center. So, I told her I would pass that on because I was really happy to hear that. Couple of things going on. The high school is having the Diary of Anne Frank. That will be on the 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. And you can go on ludus.com to get your tickets. It's general admission. The Goodfellows Thanksgiving, the day after Thanksgiving, and so Friday and Saturday, Goodfellows will be out on the street corners with our papers. Be generous, we have a lot of families this year. Third, but not quite final, I was on Facebook the other day, and unfortunately, I did not write down the name of the person that posted, and I couldn't find it again because you know how that is. Once you go away from it, you never find it again. It just vanishes. But there, apparently, there was a young man who told his father that he wanted to go, he wanted to do a park cleanup. So, it was Kiwanis Park, and he, his parents told him, well, see if you can't get some people to sign up. Well, unfortunately, apparently, nobody signed up. But the young man and his family went over and they cleaned up Kiwanis Park, and I just want to say thank you, hopefully whoever that is, somebody's listening, and they know who it is and they can identify him. So, thank you very much for that.
I can add just real quick to that. I did see the same post. It was, yeah, there was a young boy, and his name was Chad. He was a 10-year-old. I don't remember the last name, but...
I remember the first name.
I also appreciated that, yeah.
I thought that was really nice. And finally, I don't think we're back, so hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving. Eat a lot and enjoy yourself.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. One, I had a mom message me about her daughter, Adriana Hill. She's been here before. She skates for the Garden City Figure Skating Club. They had their competition, state competition, and I won't read all the things she won, but at the end, she wrote, "Out of all 11 levels, she was a top scorer for all program levels and second overall top scorer in all compulsory element levels." And she said, "This is out of about almost 700 skaters throughout the state." So, I wanted to congratulate Adriana. She always manages to represent Garden City very well all over the state.